All right, it's five o'clock, I call this work session to order. First up, for discussion, has legal wall. Would you like to?
Okay. Um. Good evening, um, my name is Avery Jura, uh, I'm a senior at Whitehall High School. And uh, I've been working on a personal project um regarding the implications of illegal wall um or an illegal art wall in Whitehall. So um, I understand that you've all been given a copy of my proposal. Uh, and I'd like to highlight some of the main points before I take questions. So um, the first um, first thing I'd like to outline kind of is the research that I did um on uh legal wall in Ann Arbor. Um, it's in paragraph three of my essay, um, I just like to read that. Um, a student at University of Michigan, my sister by the way, um, Olivia uh Jura. Notices that with the exception of graffiti alley, there's little to no graffiti or vandalism um in and around downtown. She concludes that all the street artists and mural artists and taggers use graffiti alley instead of defacing public property. A legal wall by creating a safe space eliminates the want or need to tag illegally. Um, the second thing I'd like to highlight um is my favorite location, which is down in the proposal section. Cause I realize that that's probably one of the biggest concerns of the council. Um, and the best location that I've found is the bike trail tunnel that runs under Colby Street. Um, because it has good pedestrian traffic, um, it's a good location. It has plenty of space for artists to to paint and do work. Um, it's safe from vehicle traffic, no one's gonna be like um complaining about people getting in front of roads and stuff. Um, and it's near like the good public parking, it's near like Goodrich Park, so there's lots of um places for um people to go. Um, finally, um, I want to explain what I plan to contribute to this project other than what I've already done. Um, if it's approved, um, up until the end of the summer of course, because I'm a senior and I'll most likely be going to U of M um for college. Uh, but I will find a successor to take over this project um from Whitehall's NHS club. Um, it's not currently an NHS project, but um I like am willing to make it one. So, um, the first thing, I'm willing to do all communication with businesses and community members. And um, I'm willing to do all outreach, although I'd like some help with, I'll talk about that in a minute. Um, I can handle most of marketing, publicizing. Um, I'll be the first to paint there and make any adjustments to the area such as cleaning, posting notices and maintenance. Um, I can create a website if one is necessary. And I'm also willing to organize uh and host a kickoff event if that's something we'd be interested in as well. So, um, I work extensively on this proposal and this project and I'm very passionate about it. Um, as a street artist and I have full intentions of seeing it through, if possible, if it's approved. Um, the only thing I'm looking for from you guys, the only thing I need is approval and a little help with outreach if you're willing. Um, in the form of just communication that we you have in the community, whether that be like um announcements, newspapers. Um, word of mouth, social media, you know, so on. Um, so at this time, if you have any questions, concerns or hesitations um on this proposal, please ask. I want to make sure that you're all com- um completely know what I'm asking and the extent to which I'm willing to go and get this project created.
Alright, also, well, um. Kudos to you, uh, I I like the concept. Um, the location as far as I'm concerned is really good because that's been a battle for how many years Roger, keeping the the stuff and everything?
It hasn't been a battle lately.
Lately, it was for a while where we couldn't keep people from from doing that. Um. Again, another draw, I mean, we could put some nice signage on both sides. You with rules and and regs and saying, hey, welcome to Whitehall's legal wall, feel free to express yourself. Know this is what we don't want in there and I like the concept, I think it's a good idea.
I don't have any big issue with it either, other than. I I mean, I I know when artists you're kind of working out of your head, so it's not like you can actually draw us a picture of what you're gonna put on a wall, but.
True, I mean, I do have some um, some like murals that I've designed and things like that, so.
I mean, I I I'd like us to be able to have a little bit of control about, you know, the subject matter of what might go up.
Okay, um, something that I could do about that is, um, I like I said, I I would handle maintenance. So I could like if anything goes up that, you know, the council doesn't approve of or anybody, you know, wouldn't approve of. Anything inappropriate, something like that, I would just go and paint over it, that'd be part of my maintenance and I will fund that and everything, so.
I mean, that's 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 the only question that I would have about it.
Yeah.
I I think it's a great project also.
Thank you.
The only other thing would be the the wall. What do we call that? Uh, the part between uh.
Pocket part?
Pocket part, wall and uh.
Those are not.
Those are not city property, so we'd have, somebody would have to get permission from those businesses.
I would, I mean, if that's something you guys wanted to do, I could decide, I could talk to anybody, any private owners of any business or anything.
That's why I'm thinking the best space is is under the bike trail and just versus putting it up there.
Yeah.
Okay.
I would be agreeable to the idea, I think you could have a lot of character when I was at uh Michigan State, there's a there's the rock there that operates on a similar principle.
Yeah. Hmm, I painted on that rock before.
Yeah, I mean, I kind of think that back when they put that rock there, it was probably about the size of a Kleenex box and the rest is not wall paint.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Every single day it's something different.
It's cool, yeah.
But I think um, well, to address um Scott's concern, I think that uh if we do start seeing stuff there. People abusing the privilege, maybe some stuff that's not so family friendly. And maybe we gotta re- reevaluate it at that point, but it's it's easy enough to give this a a try to run.
Okay, thank you.
I'm, I'm all for it. I've been to uh been through several communities uh on different travels, couple in Ohio. That uh, some of them go all out, I mean, just about every every building has got something on it. And and it really does, it it enhances uh as long as it's done right, you know. And I and I think you've, from what I've read that you put down, you're gonna go in the right way. But uh, yeah, uh, I mean, it actually draws people in, you know. Walk around, be able to look at, look at that, I I guess I would hope that if 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 we approve this and I I get the consensus that we probably will. For the tunnel, which is the only one that we really have control over.
Hmm.
Uh, I guess when that's done, I I would hope that maybe some of our businesses. Uh, we've got several buildings in town that uh could use a little cleaned up and, you know.
Yeah.
Maybe they'd be, you know, when they see what you're doing.
I'd be willing to expand the project or just do some heroes for businesses too.
Yeah, I. Whatever we've gotta do, you know, at this point, I'm, yeah, I'm all for it.
Thank you.
Would anybody that um made pictures there, would they have to go through you to do it or through?
Um, no, so typically um legal walls that have existed in the past. It's just you go and you paint. And so the the kind of like maintenance that I was talking about would probably be just me stopping by once a week and reviewing everything and making sure there's nothing like that up there.
What if somebody didn't like a painting and they decided to paint over it?
That's completely okay, because that's just like part of the culture of street art is that stuff gets painted over all the time. I went and did a really crazy piece in Ann Arbor about a month ago. And I came back the next day and it was completely painted over and it's just, it's just part of the the thing, so.
What is tagging or tagging in a way?
So, there's like three different kinds of graffiti, there's tagging, which is literally just like you have a spray paint can or like a marker or something and you just like put your name on it. Which is like what typically happens in terms of vandalism. And then, which is kind of, I'd like to stay away from that mostly, um, cause you know, that can be like harder to deal with. And it's like not as artistic. Um, but the other two forms are like just um like throw ups, which are like someone just has like one color spray can and they make something like cool, like like a flower or or like a word. Um, and then the other would be like a piece, which is like multiple colors, like like essentially a mural. And so um tagging art is like less artistic, I would say.
So that's kind of like um gang markings or like that, is like what tagging would be?
Yeah, essentially, yeah. Hmm.
Yeah, I wouldn't wanna see any of that.
Exactly, yeah, so that's, yeah, that's why I would be going and covering that stuff up.
Keith?
I think it's awesome, I hope it works out well and it'd be nice that if it's a works well for you, that maybe we can get a. Maybe a piece of concrete canvas somewhere that's a little bit more accessible for people to see.
Okay.
Thanks, great idea.
The other nice thing is it's always changing, it's never the same.
Yeah.
Yes, Friday.
May I?
Yes.
Couple of quick questions. Is there going to be a contact person available to us, let's say we we find something that's offensive and we're not gonna wait till next Thursday for you to show up?
So um, something that I um put in my proposal, I would be willing to create like a website, um, or. I could also like on, if we're talking about like, if you guys wanted to have like a list of rules or something up there at some point. Then I could potentially put like a like a contact point and anyone could contact me or when I go to college, um whichever successor that I choose.
Okay, perfect. Um, so so is, did you have any idea for a standard of conduct for the for your wall?
Um, that would be something that I could draft, but the the premise is that it's nothing offensive or overly political.
Okay.
Um, and and it it just has to be like, it has to look nice.
Okay.
Because it's an art wall, not like a, not like a write what you think wall.
Gotcha. And and then the last question, ladders, are people gonna try and get on ladders and get up?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that that almost always happens and and if you if you make like a big wall. Or if you make like a big um like graffiti wall, then people will try and make like big murals that cover like lots and lots of space. Like that's something that I've done in the past, um, to make them like really large scale and beautiful.
Do you know what liabilities you incur then?
Um, I think, I I don't.
Okay.
But um, it being just like a public property, I'm guessing it would probably just be like, um, you know, use at your own risk.
Which essentially is like the slutty hill.
Yeah, it's like any 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 public place.
Yeah.
As long as it was posted at both ends of the wall, that you know, you're doing whatever you're doing at your own risk.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yes.
I think that would probably cover it, that's what covers the hill.
Might be worth the question next time we've got council available.
I agree, yeah.
Well, I have no doubt.
Okay, thank you.
The, are you familiar with the, I guess it's a public wall in Grand Rapids on North Lafayette?
I'm not.
It's a fairly long wall, I'm guessing it's probably two, three hundred feet. And it's just a retaining wall. And it's there's s- small sections where I don't know if they've lined off the wall, say this is your section.
Hmm.
So rather than saying, okay, the whole wall is yours.
Okay.
I'm I'm concerned that if we go to the. The tunnel, and I I do support this, I think it's a great idea, but my concern is I'd like to see some sort of control where. I don't know, maybe you square it off and say, okay, give people squares to do.
Okay.
Rather than saying, okay, you get the whole wall.
Yeah, okay, I actually, I like that and that's something that I haven't thought of or I've never seen before. Um, but I feel like that would um eliminate a lot of like going over the top of other peoples and and things like that, so. I'm, yeah, I definitely would be down for that.
Yeah, I wouldn't wanna see somebody, you know, being down here for a couple of days painting what they thought was, you know, their best work or whatever. Somebody else comes along a day later and says, well, there's no space anywhere else.
But that's the culture, that's the culture, I would say.
But I'm just saying, but that's the.
Yeah.
So it's like balls.
You know, it's not our, it's not our art, it's, you know.
Also, um, the the thing with the ladders is, um, people that like typically do a better job, they they put them up higher on the wall. So that people won't just spray paint it for them, or.
Do the Sistine Chapel up on the.
Yeah, like, um, there was a a legal wall I went to in California on vacation this summer. And um, it was these giant pillars in Venice Beach actually. And uh, there was some professional like graffiti artists that were up on these giant ladders making these like crazy elaborate murals and stuff. So that's kind of what I envisioned for like more um extravagant pieces.
Can you put um some examples somewhere that that we could look at or that maybe people who are going, thinking about doing it. Of examples of things that are acceptable or?
Sh- yeah, sure, I could totally do that, I also have some.
Like have on a website or wherever you you might, oh, I don't know.
Yeah. Um, I could do that, would you like to be contacted with that?
Yeah.
Okay, um, I can give you my email or address or something.
I would suggest you send it to to our city clerk and it makes you get dispersed in favor of the individual council.
Yeah, okay. Okay, I can do that, I can do that.
I think, I think it it a minimal investment by the city for a couple of signs and one that says welcome to the wall. Or the the art wall or whatever we wanna call it. Um, and then the other one, maybe on the other side, cause I mean, we got both sides. The other one we put a rule that says no, no violent depiction, no nudity, whatever, whatever, no political stuff and.
Hmm.
That way it 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 becomes again the the destination people wanna come and look at it. I mean, it's kind of like art fest, I mean, done. People wanna, I mean, he went out to California and looked at one out there, I mean, so. Make it, make it, make it art. I would say it's well, be well worth your time to take the trip to Grand Rapids and see that one.
Okay.
How many local artists do you think there are?
Um, I, that's a good question and my answer to that would be, um, you don't really know until you have something like this.
Hmm.
And I certainly would be doing a lot, because I like, I'm very passionate about it, it's one of my favorite things to do, like in the world. And so I would probably at least do like three pieces this summer. Um, and then there's probably a lot of more small scale artists who would just like, you know, typically paint things. And they might come and just like paint like a little square or something or like a brick, but I mean, I can see all types of things happening.
Don't forget the festivals coming up again this year. They have a bunch of people from who knows where.
That's true.
What festival?
Crawford.
Or uh.
Okay, that's right.
Yeah.
They might have a lot of marijuana leaf pictures.
I I would, I would like to see a more.
Legalized, not informal.
Proposal with, as you said, proposed rules and contacts.
Rules, okay.
I I think it's evident that you certainly have the support of everyone on the council that thinks this is a good idea. I'd like to see it more formalized. This is what I would do now, what signs up, this is a verbiage that I would have, this is.
Okay.
And and I think that uh.
Just actually be able to help with that.
Right, right, now, I was gonna say, maybe uh connect with our DPW.
I just had another thoughts that I wish we had the council here tonight, but maybe we can make note of to ask uh the first question. Um, being the the liability issue we were talking about earlier, make sure that we're free of liability, it's an at your own risk thing. The second uh thought I just had is the fact that we are a unit of government and uh if we're allowing people to put. The second uh thought I just had is the fact that we are a unit of government and uh if we're allowing people to put. Speech up on this wall, um are we gonna run into any First Amendment issues if then we tell them what kind of speech they can and can't put up there? I would hope not. Um. I think we should probably ask the council about that.
I'd say leave it open. Let them use their their thoughts and if it becomes an issue, worry about it. But you know, don't stifle it. Just uh I think that they'll be respectful and they'll do what the right thing.
I feel like.
And in the meantime too, if uh if if we've we've got a a private citizen who's taken it upon himself to kinda manage.
It's not it's not, we're not telling him what to do.
Exactly. And then part of part of this culture, this stuff gets painted over and if you go and you see offensive stuff and paint it over, that's not us doing anything.
Right, yeah.
This wall in Grand Rapids, I there's probably at least fifty different little sections where people have painted stuff. And a lot of it's really, really, really cool. And then there's ones that that have been gang tagged. Right over top of it. That's that happens. It's it's gonna it's gonna happen here. Um.
The Whitehall Blood and Crips will be right on that.
I think it's the moped mafia.
So if if you have someone that such as yourself or your person that's gonna follow up you. We can say, okay, that's really offensive. We need that covered up.
Okay.
Yes, if if it was a private wall, would that help the city council at all?
That would.
I got a huge wall on the side of our building. Well.
Well, yeah, I was gonna say that's that's one of the perfect walls.
We talked about that one, the Earth Councils already, so.
And I know that.
Is Aaron still?
For the for the council's benefit, the art the art council has talked about putting a mural on. Catch March wall and they're they're looking at raising funds to hire a professional painting something. To the tunes of to the tunes of thousands of dollars.
Okay.
There's some college funds there, I think. So. This 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 discussion is good.
The only I would I would caution on that this year is if we're gonna be doing some demolition and construction down there, that probably wouldn't be the the appropriate place to. Let let it go this year.
That's that too.
Well, like I say, I I think if they if they did the the tunnel wall.
It's unique.
Yeah, well, yeah, yeah. And like I say, the fact too that go ahead and we've got something going. People can come and look at it and say, hey, yeah, now wouldn't that look great, you know, up here on this wall? And you know, we might be able to expand it very easily from there. Like I said, there again, that would be out of our control. But I think it would give you and and the ones that you're working with a little leg up. You know, as far as as far as getting permission.
I I like the idea of the private business deciding whether or not they wanna have it and what they would allow on there. I mean, you'd probably wanna have some idea of what they were gonna paint on there before you just say, yeah, go for it, paint whatever, right? I mean.
Maybe this is an audition. This could be your audition to paint on his.
I like that. I like that.
Ju- just an idea. It's a huge wall. I know we talked about it before, so it's something that uh. I don't know how far the Arts Council is along with what and and whether that will actually go forward or not, so seem like a good way to.
It's still on their wish list. I I I know that I I continue discussions with them on that and they'd still like to, but the. Their their biggest issue was raising the funds to to hire this professional. I I I don't want us just to be seen as well, the city's throwing its hands up and saying, well, we give up, we're just gonna let them do what they want. I like the idea of it being somewhat controlled. And having someone such as yourself willing to step up and take responsibility for any inappropriate material. I think it's a a a great idea.
I heard the city of Misspeaking paid quite a large sum of money to get that uh railroad trestle overseas way.
Yeah, they got two of them. That was expensive. That cost them a lot.
Yep.
A lot of money.
A lot of that was traffic and equipment.
Yeah, I was gonna say that was uh.
Yeah.
The area that they were doing it was a little effing.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to? Say.
Uh, yes. I think this is impressive. I've raised proposals. I'm really quite surprised. Um, and I like the idea of the pocket park. Cause I can imagine sketches being submitted, a full wall murals. Will sure look better than white brick and we've already got a businessman who's offered, you know, one side. So I think you guys should go for it. I think under his management, I think it'd be a good thing.
Thank you.
Painted on the on the wall, the outside old walls of that one. That home that. I mean, that's probably, I mean, but there's a lot of wall there too, you know, and that might be another pro- another proposed place to. To paint, you know, in the future, then I think that, you know, they would also wanna control what was being painted.
President Hall Matt here, don't we, in the city council?
So you feel you have direction?
Yeah, so um I guess what I'm taking away from this is that I should um make something a little bit more concrete. In terms of like a list of rules, um and what exactly I would be doing and what I would be putting up.
And I and I think if you touch base with the with Scott.
Yeah.
Um, city manager, he could probably help you lead you in the right direction as far as. Like Peter Salter said, give us be able to give us a proposal that we can vote on. And uh make sure the wording and everything is right. But he could I he could certainly help you with that. We don't we don't want you to have to keep coming back every two weeks and and then us, you know, you need to do this more to it or something like, you know. If you get with Scott and Brenda and, you know.
Finalize the details.
Get it all right right from the get go, you know, a month from now, we could probably be voting on it and approving it.
Okay, sounds awesome.
Rather than, I mean, since you're limited on time to the, you know, to the end of summer, hey, now, I I think you're starting it. We'd wanna definitely be able to do it too.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
Okay, alright.
Well, um, if that's all the questions you have, um, thank you so much for your all of your time. I really appreciate all the support you guys are giving me. Um, if you have any further questions or if you think of anything, um, please be feel free to email me. My email is juraavery at gmail dot com. Um, J U R A A V E R Y. Um, but yeah, that's all. Thank you.
Appreciate you coming up.
Yeah, happy Valentine's Day.
You could have bought punch keys and that would have helped.
Okay, I'll get I'll get back to you.
Okay, good.
Next week, yeah, too.
Alright. Informational items.
We have any. I got one. I got one.
Bring it on.
So um after we went through our uh Parks and Rec plan, one of the things in the park rec rec plan was a disc golf. So I get the guys up at Ravanna Disc Golf up on Facebook the other day, just to get some ideas on numbers and facts and figures to see. Roughly how much it would cost. Um, he came back with uh um roughly a nine hole course. Uh baskets are four hundred a piece, concrete roughly is four hundred for nine holes. Um, key markers are fifty bucks a piece, um which comes to forty four fifty for nine holes. Um, he said he would be more than willing him and the guys come out and help do a layout and they play it. So I have no idea the layout or what you'd want or anything else. And he says, you know, when do you want holes crossing each other and everything else? So that was another thing. And then he said you can offset some of that. Um, they did out in Ravanna. Uh, they sponsored, they uh had hole sponsors. Um, they put a tag on the hole sponsored by and they put the name of the company and everything else. And they said they made two hundred bucks a hole on that. So um if you if you get all nine holes sold, it's eighteen hundred bucks. So you're down to twenty six fifty. For nine holes of disc golf, give somebody something else to do. And the Ravanna pages, I I I liked it just to watch and they are active.
Who runs the Whitehall Time Chip on?
I don't know.
I've heard it's very popular on weeknights, so.
Yeah, yeah, the the Ravanna guys, they'll sit there and say.
My grandson plays. I walked with him once and watched him play. I tried it, good.
I mean, it's just like it's just like the art wall. It's gotta be the thing, you know, it's it's just, but it's one more thing, so.
What are these radios, this?
Like funnel field. I mean, they could they could do it and that way we keep everything sport sport wise to funnel field. Theirs is theirs. Theirs is out in theirs is out in Ravanna. It it was a county park. They actually had somebody design it. But like I said, the guys that are out there play it all the time, cause hey, I'm I'm gonna go shoot nine holes on this time. Anybody wanna show up and three guys will be underneath? Yep, yep, I'll be there, I'll be there and.
What if what if they're undoing their stuff that they took down?
I have no idea. I don't know if it was theirs or what, but.
You could probably go back and forth across that gully, couldn't you?
Well, I'm I'm sure the the like I like I said, I mean, quite honestly, you know, if we. Even at forty four hundred dollars or forty five hundred dollars, it's not a huge amount of money for what it could bring in. I mean, those guys are gonna come in and cows and guys and they'll eat in town and they'll spend money here, so it's like everything else.
I think we own both sides of that gully, don't we? We own south of the north of the the cemetery too, right there, like the woods back.
Yeah, where the uh they're putting that forest man back there or redoing the forest man.
Right.
Uh, Jason, the new D D P W guy, he is very, very active in that, him and his wife.
Okay.
And I spoke to him and he's all gone home to do the exact same thing that you're talking.
Okay.
Um, I've talked to Ryan from uh Windsor Deck and he's there's.
It's it's one of those, I mean, it's just like everything else. You you know, the guys that golf golf chase that little white ball around. They go places. Hey, we'll go here, we'll go here, we'll go here, we'll go here. And they bounce all over the place and.
I like to golf and and the thing I like about a lot of courses is that. Like the one in Fremont there that used to be part of the Derby Road Nation there. It's got all the hills and the water and the valleys and the different stuff. It was just like a plain open field with. Go here, go here, go here. That's kinda boring actually, you know, so I think if it's got some contour to it, then it draw.
And that other side of that other side of funnel does. I mean, there's a there's a section that they cut right through the, they got bushes on both sides. And I mean, it's kind of an up and down. I mean, best thing, I mean, had those guys look and do a layout, see what they think. And like I said, forty five hundred dollars, I mean, hmm, it just to have them here, I mean, our swing sets cost and it's a lot more than that.
That seems to me about the same price that Jason.
Yeah, and I looked, I I did some just a quick look and yeah, four hundred dollars is usually pretty close to the top of the line basket, so.
He's got people that said they would do all the work.
Yeah, yeah, that's what they said too. Yep, they just point him in the right direction and they'll come and do the labor for free, so.
Does anyone know anyone on the Parks and Rec board over at?
For what?
No, I don't. You.
I mean, they took that whole course down, cause they had one. I mean, I feel like it's.
That sounds like a visit.
Yeah, there you go.
I've gotta go to skiing for a meeting.
Yeah, maybe we'll get a deal or.
Yeah.
They may have something we want, so.
And that is in our Parks Master Plan to do that. I mean, it's. I I every time I see Jason is, when are you gonna get started on and what's going on with that?
Yep.
I'd like to.
See, especially like you said, if Brooklyn's got the baskets and they're just sitting out at the out at the D P W garage on the. I don't know what they would have done with them unless they were private, but I hope they would have bought. Sounds good to me. So it's something for the mayor to do tomorrow.
Anyone else got anything they wanna talk about?
Can I ask the chief a question? I still don't understand why it's trespassing for the police department. To go on someone's property to see if there's a legal license plate on a vehicle. I mean, you're suspecting that someone is breaking the law basically, so. Well, you have to have more than I suspect. That's the that's the issue. If I were uh. The it's it this is based on a court decision where the court says you can't come onto the curtilage unless you have. The the probable cause and even even then, that's uh. If if it's if it's a car sitting in someone's yard and I can somehow establish probable cause that that the plate is expired. Well, why don't you go get a search warrant? If you're if you wanna look at that, get a search warrant. And that's the legal standard. And then I can think of a couple of different cases that I uh, one of them had to do with. Uh, they wanted to look in the barn because they thought they were dealing drugs in the barn. And they they walked onto the property and got close to the barn. They didn't go in the barn. But once they got close to the barn, according to the court, you are on the curtilage. And you cannot approach on the curtilage without probable cause and and some exigency, including a search warrant. So that's that's where we're at. If it's something that we can obviously that's obvious from the road, um. That's a that's a whole different thing. Uh, I just uh an officer, well, actually I made them do it. Uh, I on my way home, I I drove by a car and I could see that the tag was yellow. And and I could see that there was snow all the way around it. Obviously, it hasn't moved in a while. And I reminded them that this is your area, take care of it. Um. I mean, there's, you know, I I walk all the time with the dog and I, you know, I could probably give you at least a dozen and a half vehicles that I know. Have been sitting in the exact same spot for at least two years, some probably three or four years.
That's probably why they backed the car in.
Yeah, and they're backed in, so you can't, some of them are, some of them aren't. Yeah, and and you know, some, let's say the tire's flat, then it then it becomes something apparent from the street. Now I can go up to the door and say, hey, this car is not operable that way, therefore you're in violation. But if all four tires are up and I can't see the plate. Well, there's there's one over here on Lewis Street that I I probably told you about, that had a couple of cars sitting in the driveway. They've been there probably at least two years and they both had at least one flat tire on them, if not two. And the same cars are still sitting in the exact same place three years later. And there's jack stands and jacks underneath them holding them up, so you can't tell that they have flat tires. I mean, it's.
Give me the address again.
I'll have to get it for you. I know where it's at and I don't know what specific address is off the top of my head.
Can you use a drone to fly in?
No, no. I I you know, it just it just drives me nuts when when I can see it, especially walking in the winter time. You know, and you can see the same vehicles are covered with snow whenever there's snow and they never go anywhere. You know, and and we can't do anything about it. Can we go on a sidewalk, on a city sidewalk? As long as we are in a place open and accessible to the public, what we can see from there is all legit. Okay. I'll get I'll get you some addresses or some places then. Thank you.
How's the deer?
Tastes great.
A few of my yard, they need to taste great.
What's that?
Uh, yeah, yeah, we were discussing that earlier that uh that I think we need to move a little faster and a little farther than. Letting people know that not feed the deer. They're pretty much feeding themselves with plants and my trees and.
I think Scott said that was first step for D N R is you have to.
Well, I I'm not talking about bringing the D N R and I'm talking about if we if people have property and it meets. The criteria of an ordinance we develop and like what Montague has, that we allow it for both. It's only that's gonna it's only that's gonna work. I mean, you gotta you gotta decrease the herd. There's too many deer. First fifteen years delivering where I lived, I didn't have a problem. The last five dick, I tell you, I mean, I got a brand new pile of. Little black droppings in my ear from last night. Little black droppings in my yard from last night, so it wasn't the neighbor's cat, so. Um, it's an every night thing and an everyday thing, I mean, they're coming out six, seven o'clock, I'll have them, chase them out of that yard.
Oh, they have a move for sirens anymore, they're.
They don't, no, they don't, they don't.
They're, they're good, seven year now.
But, but the problem is, is every year there's more and I mean, there's nobody, nobody to decrease the herd, not a predator to decrease the herd. And just gonna keep getting better. Every year they have one or two.
Anything Keith?
I have nothing.
Okay, any, anything from the public? I guess we got us a, a break.
We got a little break.
All right, then I'll adjourn this meeting.
Then I'll adjourn this meeting.